It's 7:02, we'll call the meeting in order. Ken, would you do the roll, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Larson?
Here, sir.
Commissioner Gerard?
Here.
Commissioner Young?
Here.
Commissioner Seeler? Commissioner Miller? Three in attendance, thanks.
All right. We have a quorum. We ask that you, if able, please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Chair is looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented or with changes.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the agenda as presented to us.
I have a motion, I have a second.
I'll second that, Chair.
I have a motion and a second. It's an undebatable motion. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Next up is the consent agenda. The Chair is looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented or with changes.
I'll make a motion to approve the January 24th meeting.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Our first regular item is Wintco Dental Clinic in the 900 block of Centennial Drive Southwest, and we will consider Resolution Number 02-28-24-01 Site Plan Approval. Ken, are you presenting?
I am, Mr. Chair. Scott?
It'll be a few. I'll explain how this works. I know you're in a hurry to get up here, and we appreciate that. What'll happen is that the city will present the application as they understand it. Commissioners will then ask any clarification questions. Then we will ask you to come up and see if you'd like to add anything, and we may have some questions for you, and then we'll go from there. So sit back for about 15 minutes here and relax. Ken, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hopefully it's only five or 10 minutes. But as you introduced, we have a request this evening for site plan approval for a new dental clinic. The applicant is Chad Winial, who represents Wintco Properties. The site is on the screen here. It's just north of 11th Avenue Southwest. Quest owns this facility here. It's a vacant property in this location. This is a regal view with the site. The site actually is the northern half of this property where all the trees are. And I'll go to the next image. It's parcel B on the survey that's being looked at. And just for a record, I didn't put it in the report. There was a minor subdivision lot split approved earlier this year for this. It was actually a lot line adjustment. The old property line ran through here. City approved moving it up to this location, so now Quest owns everything that they use. And then they sold parcel B to the developer to create the dental clinic. This site is 1.4 acres in size. The zoning there is MU2, which is our general mixed-use district, and clinics are a permitted use. In that zoning district, this is the site plan with the landscape plan overlaid. Again, clinic building here, about 5,300 square feet. The main entrance, if you will, the front would be in this location. One driveway going out to Centennial Drive. The area on the north here is a large wetland complex, and then these are shown as two stormwater ponding facilities that are required by the Watershed District. Because of where the wetland is and having to avoid that, that really limited their options of where they could place the building and the parking. And overall, the site plan does meet all our requirements for a commercial building in this zoning district. The wetland is .27 of an acre, so a fairly good chunk of the 1.4 acres that they have on the site. And again, they've been working with the Watershed District on what they could do or not do. They are proposing a minor, about 350-foot, square-foot impact area here, which the Watershed District will be reviewing, and I believe has approved. I'll jump back to this aerial photo. Shows that much of the lot, if not almost all of it, is covered in trees. Had a tree inventory done. The only large trees on the site are cottonwoods. All the rest are smaller and scrub and underbrushed. If you've driven by it, it's really not a very pretty property. Yes, ma'am? So to clear or to build the project with the clinic, the parking drive, and the stormwater ponds, all the trees, except those in the wetland area, will have to come down. But in their tree inventory, they didn't, again, find anything of significant value, which is fortunate. One thing I'll touch on a little bit further with this landscape plan is tree planting. It's on page three of your report. Normally, a site like this, the city would require 33 larger or overstory trees be planted, and then about 100 understory or shrubbery be planted on the site. And that's based on our code standards and using the lineal feet around the property. But because of Centennial Drive, the need for, there's underground utilities in the Boulevard area here, and allowing for the wetlands and the ponding areas to work, especially in the new ponding areas, there is very limited choices or places that they could find to plant or propose to plant new trees. So as the report outlines, they are only proposing seven trees. They are showing areas that there may be two or three additional locations where additional larger trees might be able to be added, especially in this area. But they are proposing 136 of the understory and shrubbery type plants, and you can see all of those, and around the site, and as foundation plantings around the building. Because of the challenges with the site and the features on the site and need for everything to work with the parking, the building, the sidewalks, it's staff's opinion they did really the best they could to add landscaping that'll beautify the site, make it consistent with really what the intent is of our landscape design standards, which would be to increase and maintain property values, prevent and reduce soil erosion, sedimentation of stormwater runoff, and improving air quality. So it's staff's opinion that this plan, while it's short on tree planting by the strict numbers, meets the intent of our city standards for landscaping. The lighting plan they submitted has one change they'll need to make. They are aware of it. It shows that some of the lighting along the south property line is over or greater than our .04 lumens as allowed. They're close to .8 in a couple places. They're aware of that, and they'll be changing that part of their plans. The building itself and the design, oh, and I'll touch on one other thing. There are no, the public utilities are in Centennial Drive. They will be extending those into the site from Centennial Drive. So within the site, there will not be any new public utilities. The building itself, and again, we have the site plan overlaid, shows a mix of vertical and horizontal shapes and materials and a variety of roof lines, as you can see from the images, and really is, in my opinion, a quite pleasing building to look at. Again, this site plan shows the stormwater ponds, the wetlands, the building and the layout of the building inside. This is the proposed trash enclosure here for their use in the site. So really, no issues with the building design. We had sent the plans out for comments from our other departments and agencies. The city engineer provided some initial comments on the initial plans dated January 23rd of this year. Their engineer reviewed those comments and made changes to the plans, and the revised plans are what are in your packet. The city engineer reviewed the second set of plans and have found them to be substantially in compliance with all our city standards and requirements. Rice Creek Watershed District has reviewed the project, has given it a conditional approval, subject to the final permitting and final plan approval that they typically would require for any project, and that permit will have to be issued by the Watershed before excavation or building construction starts. Page six and seven, then, in your report is our standards for considerations for approval of site plans, and this plan with the five criteria meets all those criteria. So in summary, staff finds that the proposed use and site plan are consistent with our 2040 comprehensive plan, with the dental clinic, with the proposed layout, and standards that we would generally like and expect in our general mixed-use zoning district. And so we're recommending that the Planning Commission approve the resolution, which is 02-28-24-01. It's in your packet with 24 conditions of approval. I want to point out one thing, though. In the actual resolution itself, I found it typed on page one. I've got a February 14th instead of a 28. That was my early draft, so let it be corrected. And as well, in talking with the applicant in the last few days, they are hoping to start their tree removal sooner than later, and so I am proposing a change in condition five, which says, "The applicant or owner shall receive all approvals and permits from the city, the Watershed District, Department of Labor and Industry, any other state agencies before starting a demolition, tree removal, grading, or construction." I'm suggesting we strike the tree removal from that, and once the Watershed District has approved the permit and they get their erosion control in place, staff is comfortable with them starting their site cleanup and tree removal. That is a overview of my report. Susan, if you want, I can touch on the sidewalk now if you wish. And Commissioner Young brought it to my attention that someone mentioned to her that it would be a nice feature, I'll go back to this plan, if this sidewalk here could connect out to the sidewalk along Centennial, so anyone walking from the north, coming down, could come across here, connect to the sidewalk, rather than coming all the way down to the driveway and then cutting across the parking lot. We spoke briefly to the architect before the meeting, and they seemed to think that that could be a workable plan. It will obviously need some changes to the grating plan and the landscape plan to make that work, but I'm sure staff can work those details out, and it does seem to make sense. So I think that change is a good one that we should include in the approval, and that would probably be under, if we want to add it, under number 16, which has A through H now, has a change to the plan to add the sidewalk on the north side of the parking area, south of the stormwater pond to connect to Centennial, or something like that, I think makes sense. So with that, I will stop and take questions.
So that would, I want to make sure I got two things clear. Pardon me? We'd put an "I" in?
In 16.
And not just add it to H? And then the other changes in five, just in five in the resolution to strike tree removal?
Correct.
Okay. So put an "I" in for that one.
And I should note, the architect and the landscape architect are here. The owner, unfortunately, was flying back today, and his flight got delayed, so he probably won't make the meeting.
All right, questions for the city? Susan?
Ken, the photo that you showed that had the large mature trees around the clinic, are those the locations of the seven trees? That didn't seem to jive for me.
Is that the plan you're looking at on the screen?
No, earlier, as you were going through the designs, there was a, when you laid out the building, one of the buildings showed the trees right there.
Okay.
Were those the seven trees that you are referring to, and that's where they will be located?
No. Commissioners, I was referring to this land, which is primarily these trees along the southern edge of the site that are, we know will work, starting here and coming across. The alternative ones are extra ones that they may be able to add along this stormwater pond. They're waiting for final grades and to know what will or will not work there.
And while you've got this one up, may I continue?
Oh, absolutely.
All right. You said there is an impact area. Is the applicant going to be adding onto wetlands or mitigating wetlands, or how are they handling that?
Ms. Young and members of the commission, it's my understanding because it's less than 400 square feet and it gets an area right here, the Watershed District is treating it as what they call a de minimis impact, and they are not requiring any mitigation for that, nor is the city.
Since there's a, since we are not requiring them to have mature trees or overstory trees, would the applicant consider around the wetland area to be adding some native wetland plants, dogwoods, willows, buttonbush, cardinal flower, I mean, the irises? Native wetland plants that would be helpful, both from a soil retention and, quite frankly, pollinator habitat? Would you think that they would consider that as part of their landscaping plan and adding to it, since we're not asking them to go to the expense of the trees?
It's my opinion, yes, that they would, but I think that's, the landscape architect's here, I think that would be a great question for him.
Those are my questions.
Thank you.
And I thank you for the sidewalk.
Jeff, you have a question?
Good, thank you, sir.
Okay. And they're good. You also mentioned that they need to add irrigation. That's not an issue?
They may need to add it, primarily, I think, around the building, but that's something, that's one of those final details that will need to be worked out with the final landscape plan.
Okay. Sounds good.
Chair, typically, we've required that as one of our...
To maintain the shrubbery.
Yes.
Yes, and I thought we had that in there.
If they can do native plantings that don't need it, in theory, they may not need it, but we'll see.
They still need to get established?
Yes.
All righty. Do the applicant wish to add anything? We ask that you state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. My name is Scott Mauer. I work for Progressive Architecture in White Bear. My home address is 30130 Lofton Avenue, Shasago City. Chad is stuck in a plane. I think he's landed. They're de-icing wings. I guess he jumped on three or four planes just to try to get here, couldn't make it. So I apologize. No, we're pretty much okay with everything. The initial report said, I did talk to Mr., oh, this Chad, I guess, that's easier for me to say, about the trail, and I'll let Stefan talk about the native plants. We already have some native plants on the site. Chad would like to reserve an option to review the possibility of the sidewalk onto the site. I'm looking at it now. I'm a little concerned that it won't fit, but we could probably squeeze it in that planting area or something like that, and then onto the drive. Yeah, something like that. But Chad said I'd rather just be able to consider it. But, you know, that's your decision. He said, bottom line is, he wants to get approvals, so he'll concede if that's going to hang somebody up.
Okay.
Walking path. He'd be okay more open to something with a more soft surface, gravel. What is it? Some kind of a stone or something like that?
There's decomposed granite.
Yeah, decomposed granite or something like that. He's concerned about the cost of the concrete, but again, he wants this to pass, so.
He's saving a bundle on trees.
There is that. Yep, there is that.
Since I have to replace a bunch of trees on my place because of...
Emerald ashbore.
Emerald ashbore.
Oh, yeah.
Trees are freaking expensive.
They're expensive to take down, too. I mean, I'm not saying that, wah, 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 no, they're, trees are expensive.
Can you just move to her house? And be taken care of a little proud?
Okay. We're here mostly for questions and let Stefan talk.
Hi, thanks for having me. Stefan McClafferty, Shoreline Landscaping. My address is 29159 Ivywood Trail, and that's in Shasago City. So getting back to the native question at hand, so what you see outlined in that blue-green color, the stormwater ponds, I did make a note on the plan to, you know, confer with the Watershed District, in this case Rice Creek, and talked to them about what native seed mixes they'd like to see in there. And I imagine it'd be a combination of like a wetland mix and then like an upland mix around the edges. That would have forbs and those types of things in it. And then I did put some dogwoods along the Boulevard, along Centennial, in the one pond there, so there are some natives in and about the project, and I'm happy to, you know, add some more if needed, or change some species out if needed to.
You've just got an opportunity here that it would be sad to miss.
Sure, sure. Agreed.
To that point, the possible extra trees, I did some tamaracks that, you know, may or may not go in, but yeah, so definitely wanted to try to make things as native as possible around the projects.
Any concerns you have on the project, either one of you? It's your time.
No, I think the biggest concern is when you buy a wooded lot to build a house, you don't think about, oh, what trees can I add to this? Because this thing is just overgrown with trees right now. So, you know, in my head, too, it's like, gosh, I can't even think of where to put them, because I can't visualize it yet.
Right.
So I guess I would ask for some leniency on maybe exact placement and things like that, because all of a sudden we have a tree showing here, and like, gosh, this is going to look so much better over here, and I'm sure we can work with the city, something like that, not raise a big stink. And yeah, like Ms. Young said, this is a pretty interesting site. It's got challenges, but what site doesn't nowadays? And there's a chance to do some really neat stuff.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome, please.
Unless you have more questions?
Nope.
We're good?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. This, the Planning Commission is the final decision on this, unless there's someone who wants to appeal our decision. No public hearing required, so I will bring it to us for discussion and resolution. Comments, concerns, questions?
No, I think they did a real nice job with what they had, as far as the landscaping and trying to get plants out in the certain areas for coverage and to beautify the property and stuff. I think they did a nice job.
I think this is a really nice infill project. You know, it's taking use of some infrastructure that we've already got. You know, we're not having to extend a whole mess of roads, we're not having to extend stuff. So I think this is a great infill project, and it's, I think it'll be a nice fit there. I am, if you're ready, sir, willing to make a motion?
I just wanted to say that I think it's also a great project for right here. I think it's a good-looking building. I think it'll be a nice addition for Centennial, which sees the back of a lot of buildings and not the front, so this'll be a nice, nice change. So with that esteemed wisdom out of my mouth, it's back to you.
Don't wait me around, please. I'll start copying. Hey, Mr. Chair, I would move approval of, Ken, please help me with the resolution number? 02-28-24-01, with the following additions and corrections. One, the, my thing went crazy here, that...
Number five.
Number five shall, the words "tree removal" shall be deleted from number five, so that they can start on the tree removal as soon as they receive their goaded heads from the Watershed District. And in number 16, with the addition of subsection I, which will say that a, an all-weather sidewalk, and that's the compromise that I'll offer. An all-weather sidewalk shall be placed between the sidewalk on Centennial, south of the pond that adjoins Centennial, and shall link up with the sidewalk that is proposed on their building. And I'm not going to include it as a requirement, but I am going to request that the applicant work with the Watershed District to enhance the wetland vegetation as much as possible. I think you've got an opportunity for a great demonstration project here. And that's a motion, sir.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Chairman, I'll second that. Motion with the same conditions as added by Ms. Young.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. So as I stated, the Planning Commission is the final decision on this, unless someone wanted to appeal our decision, and they have one week to do that. If not, you are good to go. Congratulations on the project. We look forward to the new building.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next up is Zoning Code Update Presentation, which this commission has been dying to get into, and we are really looking forward to the presentation. No pressure.
Mr. Chair, I have to apologize because I was delinquent, and I did not see this portion of the agenda, so I apologize in advance. I'm not usually delinquent, so.
I think you'll catch up.
When you see the chart, it becomes, you don't have to read it, just see the chart, and it'll become painfully obvious. But I believe, Abby, you're presenting, at least to begin with?
Yeah, I'm gonna at least just kick it off. So as the commission may remember, staff engaged with MSA Professional Services to conduct kind of an independent evaluation of our zoning code and make some recommendations for alterations needed to change the code, more than anything for just ease of use. I think you've heard staff say over the last at least couple of years, and I hope your prior staff had shared with you, how cumbersome the zoning code is, even so much as just kind of that, you know, that octopus in a box, like where do you start to try to get it back in? We really struggled with how to kind of create a system for this project. So enclosed in your packet was a memo from MSA, which outlines some of their findings or recommendation. They note that the architecture of the code is problematic, outlining that... They note that the architecture of the code is problematic, um, outlining that there are eighteen subsections with three hundred and sixty-six subsections, and it's just very daunting for anyone to navigate. Ken and I, and even Christina, even though she's new, we can navigate this cause we're used to working in and around zoning codes, um, but I think the average homeowner or developer would really, um, really struggles with our code. Interestingly, interestingly enough, um, two thirds of our subsections just are reserved for future use. Not sure why. If you guys have a list of those future, uh, code sections somewhere, let us know. Yes, Commissioner Young?
It's more of a discussion than a.
It is a discussion, yeah.
Well, and, and you have to remember that the township was all ag.
Yeah.
And most of the city was ag.
Yeah.
And there was an assumption that maybe someday possibly.
We'd have more regulations for something.
Or more uses.
Yeah.
Or there would be something more than feed mills and gas stations.
Yes, yes, I do, I do acknowledge that we're, we're a different community now than we were, uh, when we had our union. So, uh, a couple of things that they also outline is we have three hundred and twenty definitions in our zoning code, and often defining things that are not mentioned elsewhere in our zoning code. Um, we have a hundred and forty different types of uses that potentially can kind of get shrunk down into a single use category. Some of those things I'll let them, uh, uh, highlight, but overall it's our goal to kind of clean up the inconsistencies, the redundancies, the gaps, um, but we can't really get there until we look at creating a new architecture that's really suitable for updates. Because right now, um, when we start to look at maybe let's just choose landscaping standards, right now Ken and I are looking in three different code locations, and so how you kind of fix those, um, each of those sections doesn't really make sense. It's like kind of, let's try to get it all together and then look at actually updating those sections of the code. So tonight, MSA staff Claire Stickler, I know it says Mickelson in your staff report, she had been married beforehand, but it's just getting around to her name being formally changed in documents. And Kate Goodman, also a last name change, um, are here with some initial recommendations that you'll hear is to create new architecture for the code. Uh, it would reduce the total number of subsections, really combining like with like. Additionally, it would start by moving all of our base zoning district regulations to the front of the code. It's the first thing that somebody is looking for. Any of you sitting up there, if you wanted to know what you could do or not do with your property, you're gonna go to your zoning district and look. Right now you have to go almost all the way to the end of the code. And then putting those performance standards, landscaping, lighting, signage, all of those things subsequently following. Um, it's not the intent to substantially change the code in this initial ordinance and, but however, after that, we would be looking at, um, after the amendment for creating our architecture, we'd really start looking at cleaning up those gaps, those inconsistencies, starting with low hanging fruit, then kind of tackling a little bit bigger as we go. So, um, I'm gonna just turn this over to Claire, um, who's gonna give you a presentation of the analysis and just kind of hear for discussion, um, and questions of Claire when she's done, or myself, or it's kind of just, that's why we put it down as discussion tonight.
Is it gonna swirl? Oh. No, we'll need to move podium to.
We'll get it working, it might just be a minute.
That's all good, that's no worries. There you go. I gotta get it up anyways.
There you go. There you are.
Yeah, you can, you can, you can hang, hang out here with me if you want. Um, okay. So as Abby mentioned, I'm Claire Stickler, um, and I've Kate Goodman with me this evening, um, a planner with MSA Professional Services. I've been with MSA for about five years, um, working in a variety of communities as the staff planner, living in codes as well as, uh, updating some zoning codes, full repeal replace, uh, around the state of Minnesota and Wisconsin, so really, oops, sorry. It's happy to be here, happy to give some recommendations, uh, for your guys' code. I promise the presentation isn't super long or daunting, cause as we all know zoning can get that way a little bit, but the point is simplification, so hopefully we can stay simple in our analysis. Do you wanna add anything?
Um, no, just that I'm excited to be here again, Kate Goodman, I, I, um, bring to the team about twenty-five years of professional experience, um, with code as well as, uh, community development and architecture. So I'm just excited to be here, and one of the things that I think MSA stands out in the crowd for our project management and creatively finding solutions that, um, really makes sense for your community. Um, so today Claire's gonna be talking about the architecture change, and I think, um, she's gonna hit on this a little bit more, is that we really are leaving the code and the tone of the code the same.
Yep.
So that you can have a comparative, a way to look at it and compare it and see it so that's simple, so that you can move forward and have defensible decisions.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, and no, it is not a requirement to wear navy blue to work at MSA, but apparently that's what we all picked for picture day. And Emily is not with us here tonight, but she's been helping out on some of the project, and, uh, as we'll see a little bit in the recommendations for simplification, some charts and visual diagrams will come into play eventually down the road, should that be the direction the city wants to move. Um, and I wanted to have Emily on here, cause she does a really great job with our diagrams and making codes from that wonderful text we see to an actual, um, diagram, visual aid.
Representation.
Kind of all a two-page spread, but I'll get into that a little bit later. So, as Abby has presented and has been kind of nailed down now, um, we've been hired to look from an outside perspective at your code based on our experience working and living in other codes, um, to find a more usable structure and layout, uh, locations where tables and graphs could go in the future, that may take away some of that really daunting page-long text, um, as well as those inconsistencies that can make administration difficult and, uh, development difficult, people coming in having questions, not knowing that, okay, well, it's located here, and then they're midway through the application and there's something else three sections down. And really, finding a new usability within the architecture will help staff identify even better what some of those inconsistencies are when the time comes for that second analysis. But at this point, we're really just presenting no textual changes. So I wanted to give a little background of what we've been working on. We've been meeting with staff, Abby and Ken, as well as the city attorney, to ensure that, uh, what we're proposing this evening, uh, makes sense to your legal team, that's can be really important, you know, just sometimes. And all in the meantime, we've been, uh, Kate and I have been doing the existing conditions analysis, a full reading of the code with PDF comments and callouts and tags, and even when we first presented our findings to city staff, we had more sections than what we've whittled down to with our recommended changes today. So we've been working through what is the best path forward, not just from our perspective, but your staff who's living in the code and is hoping to have something that is just easier on a day-to-day basis for them to find things and point people in the right direction, kind of take off some of that staff time every day. And then that's how we've determined the recommendation for the code architecture this evening was through those conversations, through that full analysis, uh, I can send you the full working PDF if you really want to see it. Um, it's, it's really, really interesting, well, I think it's really interesting, but as Abby had mentioned, the biggest thing is you have a lot of uses, and then you have a lot of standards for uses that right now have absolutely no connection to your district standards, which are the bones of your code. Without the zoning districts, there's really no basis for these additional regulations that you hope to implement, such as wetland planting and where sidewalks should be located and all of that, you know? All of that is based on the character of the intent of the zoning district and the uses that you hope to allow in it. And by moving those in a better part of the code and combining them all together, it's just, it's a more usable format for not just somebody who, like Abby has said, we all are working in codes, we know how to read codes, um, but that really, you know, that's your, that's gonna benefit the code immensely, and some of those standards for general uses that you have in a separate section of the zoning code have standards for uses that aren't allowed in any of your zoning districts. So, right now those are just keeping up, taking up space, or is, are those uses that, you know, should be added back into the districts? And some of those are those low hanging fruit that immediately we had been noticing that the next phase will kind of implement more, but.
And that just speaks to, when you have things, uh, definitions and performance standards for uses that are not allowed, it leaves ambiguity and room for, um, I guess in this case clarity is kindness, uh, for development, and it's just really important to be really clear with your code. And the question that we'll be having in these next rounds is what was the intent there? Not, not just like scorched earth, let's get rid of it, let's talk about, was this initially, does this belong and where, where does it belong?
Yeah, and as I kind of mentioned earlier with the proposed restructuring, some of these are gonna become even more obvious for those who aren't living and looking in codes every day, uh, noticing how often things are jumping around, or if the lighting section of the code says something under your general development standards right now, when they're merged together, it's gonna be even more noticeable that it's likely those two sentences were saying almost the same thing anyways, and aren't necessarily needed to be redundant throughout the code. So then that brings us here to this evening for our initial presentation of our recommendations for the planning commission, and then, um, hopefully subsequent public hearing and approval, and then, uh, it'll go, we'll bring in just the, just this code architecture change to counsel, um, and you all in the following month, uh, following meetings. So, not to get off track on some of the other analysis, cause really, tonight we're bringing up mostly the code architecture change, but we want to fill it in with why it's so important. And so then where are some of these, what are some of these simplification strategies? Reorganize and combine the articles for cohesiveness, as we said, there's eighteen sections now, we're proposing five. No textual changes or anything like that. Prioritize the uses and performance standards, they would be now located right under your general provisions, the second thing after the, why is the code important, here's the rules of it, and then your uses, uh, and your zoning district standards. Uses will be added in a comprehensive table format, which I see that Abby had put in your packets, the draft use table, taking those hundred and forty uses on one side, all of your zoning districts, and then what type, if it's permitted, not permitted, COC, CUP, uh, things like that, all in one location, that would be at the top. Yeah, go ahead.
That table isn't labeled, so I don't know whether that table is current or your proposed, and if it's your proposed, I'm assuming that we're going to be getting, where were the differences?
So it's current, everything there, yeah, so.
Thank you.
Again, the, um, all of the guts, all of your standards, not, none of that has changed. We've just taken the guts and smooshed them a little bit and just reorganized them, so no textual changes, just organizational changes.
And that's only in row one, correct?
Correct, yeah. So, um, pretty much that, yeah, this is, the better organization is the baseline for those future improvements, some of the stuff that I've mentioned, that staff has mentioned. And then moving those hidden regulations, that's, falls in line with the reorganization for cohesiveness, uh, and then utilizing tables for the use and permit information. So although the table is an addition to the code, the content of it isn't changing anything in terms of.
It's from your current.
Yeah. There's no new districts, no new uses, everything is as how it's currently written in the code, now it'll just be, um, in that convenient table format. Um, let's see, what else was this? Well, I think this is everything I've already, has been already mentioned, um, and that Abby really hit on well in her memo was that the eighteen, which eighteen sections, districts are sixteenth out of eighteen, um, and that, you know, we've read through the entirety of the code, and many of those callouts will be addressed in that next phase, but just wanted the commission to be aware that we have read through the whole thing, and I still am quite, quite often, and I'm finding more.
What we're trying to say is that after reading through and rereading through, we believe this is the best pass, path forward organizationally, so that you can start to make some of those, um, decisions about how the city should continue to operate and look, and really what it comes down to tonight is we're just talking about taking what you currently have, and we're just doing a little bit of a stirrup on it.
Yep.
Because what we imagine doing in the future is taking those low hanging fruit, but it's gonna be hard to redline a document this big in a cohesive way, and so we think that this is the best path forward organizationally.
Yeah, and with that, I think I'll just jump to the revised code architecture. I have a few slides emphasizing this, but this describes a little bit more the movement of it, like I had mentioned, moving uses and performance standards to the front of the code. The code jumps around and has hidden subsections, so we'd be combining, uh, like uses or like sections into one, and then adding the use chart. Here's the sample use chart, I think that you have a bigger copy in your packets, but this is all I could fit on a PowerPoint slide, because it's very large. And then the new outline would be as written here, general provisions, zoning district regulations with then a uses subsection showing that, um, or a lot of the times you can link the PDF into your code, that way that big old chart isn't just, you can have, it can be incorporated either way, uh, depending on the software. Uh, general development regulations, environmental regulations, and responsibilities, enforcements, and appeals, and then, I'm not sure how large it's showing up on your screens, but this is the breakdown of the old or current outline, and the proposed outlines with those new subsections located under. Um, so before overlay districts was a separate section, well, it fits perfectly under zoning district regulations, you're already talking about uses and standards allowed in ag and mixed use versus overlay, well, having overlay in there rather than cut out makes sense.
Abby, that's page fifty-five, right, in the packet?
Uh, let me just double check.
I believe.
Thank you. Yeah, I think it's.
Yours just looks a little snazzier, I just find, it, it reads, I think, to me the same.
It is correct, yes. That is fifty-five in the packet.
You know, Abby's kind of living in the black and white world over here, you guys are spicing it all up at the blues. I think that's blue.
It is blue, and I have to take things from our marketing template, I can't take all the credit. Um, but.
Tonight, we're really looking for your thoughts and your buy-in about organizationally how we start to bite off this project and move forward in a, in a reasonable way. Um, so not changing the, the tone, just getting organized so that you can establish where you're at.
Susan, go ahead.
Having done some merging and updating and, and trying to bring old into new, um, the devil will be in those details. yes, so I, I, I need to make sure that I'm clear on what you're doing. So what you're saying is that you are looking for this outline and are concurrence with this outline, and then what you're going to do is to do what old woman says is block and copy, okay? So you've got, here's where it is currently, every place where you've got a zoning district regulation, it's pulled over from here. Every place where you've got a zoning district regulation, it's pulled over from here, put into there. It's going to be ugly, it's going to have sentences that are overlap. But you are committing to us that you will not lose anything until.
Exactly.
We say, okay, that's ugly, that's redundant, that's not what we meant, and we get to move through those specifics.
Perfectly said.
You aren't making those changes or?
No.
Okay, that's. The zoning code is, is so critical to this community. We have a responsibility. That I just want to make sure that I fully understand the steps that you're proposing.
Yep.
When you look at general provisions, could you give me some? Because often, general provisions sort of merge into the zoning district regulations. So what specifically are you proposing to put under general provisions?
It might just, I just, so again, it would just be taking the general provisions we already have in our code. So general provisions in our code is the, the title, the intent, what gives us authority. It's pulling that information.
Definition.
Into the general provisions, yes. I think definitions, interpretation, interpretation might have gotten moved into responsibilities.
So it's the stuff that needs to be there for your enabling of the use of the code. But it's the stuff that, quite frankly, most residents and developers aren't going to get into in detail. But it's those district regulations that they are probably going to jump to in those, in that table of uses.
For instance, under general provisions, I'm assuming that you would have permits required, how the review process would go.
Yep.
For instance, the fact that, that tonight, this site plan, this is the final review. So you would have those procedural things, how to get stuff done.
Yep.
Yep.
That would also go under general provisions.
Correct, with no changes right now.
Again, no changes.
And currently, applications and procedures, is it separate section? So, yeah, that would absolutely be one that's pushed in with general provisions.
So where, where's the stuff go that doesn't really belong anywhere? Are you going to jam it somewhere?
We are going to jam it somewhere. Because again, no changes, it will, we will find a home for it. And it's a little bit like, you know, the art of tidying up, right? Is that sometimes you have to take everything that you guys have, and we just have to, we have to find a home for it. We've got to find a bucket for now so that we can start to see the overlapping, the redundancies, and the inconsistencies and make those judgments that Ms. Young was already talking about. But tonight, we're just strictly organizing.
And I will say that some in your additional requirements that almost feel like they were maybe the forgotten child that didn't have a spot to go. At least, I know wetland banking is under there. And I think the provision for the Met Council fair housing isn't, there might be one other, I can't remember off the top of my head. But for instance, wetland banking could either fit under development regulations or environmental. And then, which environmental is now and your general development. So that's just one example that they're likely going to fit in one of those five. And I had looked at that before I proposed the structure, because we don't want any outliers if that's possible.
We want to find a home for everything so that nothing's missed as well.
Wetland banking, that could go away altogether. I mean, we could make that, it's like, darn.
We had that discussion.
Yeah, you picked a bad.
No substantial.
A bad example there.
Well, it's in the additional regulations, which is kind of the outlier section.
Well, I'm sure we'll come to that conversation when we talk about amending the code. And we'll probably wait to talk about some of those tougher discussion topics until a little later.
We've all got it there.
I'm, I'm all in favor of it. I think Susan and I were both involved way back when, when the city and the township merged and we had a go at it. I, I don't think we would have claimed victory on that one. But it was better than what, than two separate ordinances, not that we were one community.
Right.
But it, it never really got enough traction to get all cleaned up. So I think this is a great start. I really like your four-page chart. If, if you could make it so you could actually understand it by who you are, it would be wonderful. I'm looking at this thing going, it, it, well, it's hard to read on my laptop, you know.
Right.
There's a lot of action there.
I mean, even on the Excel sheet, I mean, look how far it goes. It's just massive.
It goes forever.
Yeah.
And, and it's got so much information on it, you do kind of lose where you're at on it, but it's, I think you guys will clean all that up anyways. But it, I think it drives home the point that we got a lot of stuff.
Yeah, and we know, we've had the discussion with staff about some of the, when it comes time for maybe some of those lower-hanging fruit textual changes is the, I think earlier I had mentioned the standards for, or general use, standards for general uses, uses for general standards, something like that. The additional regulations on your use standards, which I did an analysis and I don't remember the number, it was in an older memo. But it's like a certain percentage of, a pretty high percentage of all that are listed under there require additional permit anyway. So, you know, that's just something to think about in the future too, is if we make the process more streamlined for staff and applicants when it comes to the commission, you know, then the code can be a better tool when it, when those, or, or your processes and policies can be the tool as well, so.
Other comments for? Mr. Larson looked deeply contemplative.
Well, I'm trying to think, I'm, you know, it's, when you have like the P for permitted, E P, would it be possible to maybe like have it like a certain color? So when you look at that, you can see how it's kind of spread out on that? Would that make it easier to understand?
So we have some ideas about how to visually represent this. For tonight, we were, it was a little bit, how far do we take this? And we'll give you some options as we come, go forward.
Yeah.
About how it makes sense to the mo, most people when they're reading it. And so we'll be taking into account best practices for visual representation of zoning codes.
Yeah.
Generally for publication. So we'll be taking into account some of that stuff too. We'll be giving you some additional ways to look at it. And you're exactly right, is that there, there, there's still some room for refinement on this. And this is by no means exactly how this is going to look.
No.
But we're hoping to make that first really big leap where we're like taking all the stuff and again, kind of separating it into columns and buckets and getting it to a point where you at least know what you have, because there are some little squirrely parts. Wait a second, we forgot about that. And those are the troublesome places. We don't want to forget about anything in your zoning code. It's all important.
Where are you, I, I don't see on your proposed new outline, where are definitions going? Am I missing that one?
So they're not their own subsection currently, they're.
They're a part of the general provisions right now of the current code.
Yeah, they're already in your general provisions.
So they're a subsection of general provisions.
Yeah.
I like in, in these things and in contracts for definitions to be just right up front. So that, that as, as you are going through, you always know where to go back to. And, and we don't have definitions that kind of vary as we go through the document. And that sometimes happens historically.
Yeah. I do also want to mention, it's here and it's in your packet, but the city attorney had recommended completely removing the sign regulations from the zoning code.
Where does she reckon, where does it recommend?
It would have its own ordinance. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't live in zoning.
Sweet. No, no.
That's our ugliest, probably one of the ugliest parts of our code is sign.
Yeah, and.
It, it is butt ugly, but here's the problem, is as we talk about massing of buildings as part of our zoning code, as we talk about the, the exterior and, and the way it looks, that is all integral and the sign placement, et cetera, on the buildings is integral to the way that building looks from the road to the way that building fits in with its surroundings. Can we think about that once more?
I think we can certainly think about that. And I don't think that necessarily, we can do the architecture ordinance, keeping the sign code in there.
Yep.
Underneath our either development regulations or in one of those other miscellaneous. Hopefully we don't have, we have enough miscellaneous categories.
I think under development would be appropriate.
And then as we keep kind of working on refining the code, I think I mentioned in my memo initially, we really kind of wanted to do this full repeal and replace. And we just know, I just now, after being at Forest Lake, still not yet two years, I'm still new here too, Christina. That's what I keep saying.
Only last year.
Um, yes, no, I haven't used that for a long time. That we're, it's, if we take that full repeal and replace approach, it, it would be years. And then by that point, we're going to have outdated code sections. But if we really take this and create this new structure and kind of, you know, bite the elephant, I would, you know, those little bites at a time, we're going to actually see some pretty significant changes in a relatively short amount of time. I think signs can just stay there, right? Until we decide what we're going to do. Are we going to amend the sign code? Are we, when we amend the sign code, because at some point, we'll probably need to visit it at the very end of all of the other code changes. Then I think we can decide if we're going to move that out. And I don't think that that's going to necessarily mess up.
I already shifted it into the proposal outline.
And I would just encourage a thought about zoning code in itself doesn't operate in a vacuum. You know, zoning code is in conjunction with building code, with fire code, with other codes that do, are something other. And should we move forward with something like that in the sign ordinance? I would encourage you to understand that, again, the zoning code does not exist in a vacuum. It is in conjunction with all of the, all of this stuff.
But building, building codes are pretty universal across, I mean, the vast bulk of the building code in Forest Lake is the same as it is here goes, the same as it is in Minneapolis, it's the same as it is in Timbuktu.
I'd say I B C or U B C, yeah?
Yeah, I mean, you know, that, that, that's different.
Yeah, we'll leave it to the, your attorney to make her case for that.
I look forward to hearing, hearing that. It, it's just that as we're asking developers and, and architects, one of the things that they do is, as they bring us what their concept is, it's got sign stuff on there. It's got, you know, how, I need a monument sign here, I need this here. And, and yes, it is, it is difficult and challenging. You referred to quote, low-hanging fruit, unquote, several times. Can I have some examples, please?
Absolutely, so a lot of that was some of those.
And again, I'm just going to go to pause. Not at all part of this conversation. But it is the why we're talking about taking those next steps. So today, again, no changes, we're really just trying to see what you have and organize that. And while we were doing that, we took note of a few things.
Yeah, and that was kind of that working document that I had mentioned where it was, we had noticed definitions that didn't refer to anything usable in the code or things in the code that probably need a definition and uses that aren't listed in any of your districts. And when some of the stuff comes more prevalent, as the things move into the sections together, redundancy in some of the language for a lot of the general development, that tends to be what's jumping around the code right now. Something about lighting is mentioned here and then here. We don't need it both times, or maybe we strike one sentence and adjust the language on that other one to incorporate what that second thing was saying. That's the low-hanging fruit. And we've noticed some, staff has their tabs on, the ones that they're noticing. And so that's a general basis that I can give, because I don't have the PDF up in front of me, but, thank you, yeah.
So by now, you've probably figured out that a, if, a number of us are nuts and bolts kind of, and, and everything that was sent out will be read by.
Good.
Some of us. So the request I have though is, we typically get the packet on Friday for the following Wednesday. Something tells me this is going to take a little more time. So if you can get it out maybe two weeks early and then we discuss it, that would be appreciated.
Sir.
At least by two or three of the members that are sitting here.
Sure, the one thing I will say is, when we, so our, from tonight, what I'm hearing, I'm seeing heads nod, that you agree that creating an ordinance to create new architecture for our zoning code is a good thing. And what I hear that you agree is that we have no substantial changes in this ordinance. That the ordinance that comes back before you that we schedule a hearing for is just creating new code. Our new architecture, new outline, yes.
No changes or no substantial changes?
The only change is the addition of the table. And that is taken, we're not creating new content in that table.
Yep, so the first go around, I'm, is, would really, our intent was, let's create the structure and the environment in which we can see everything in its place. So as I mentioned, maybe I didn't mention it here, is I think right now in your, when we talk about landscaping, even earlier today, Ken and I were talking about tree removal at Wincow. We're cross-referencing a number of different sections to just figure out our answer. Let's just try to get all that in one spot. And that would be the goal of the ordinance that comes back before you.
Or referring to their conditional use, President.
Uh, pardon?
Oh, Wincow was the one tonight?
Yes.
Okay, so I was thinking of another.
That's okay. And so, you know, the goal of the ordinance that comes before you is no changes to table. But other than that, no changes. So that we really then have this environment where we can work and really analyze what's going on and then come back before you in a series of ordinances that make, at first, some very non-substantial changes, right? Cleaning up those redundancies or inconsistencies, maybe deleting some definitions, maybe condensing things in a different, you know, format or something. The goal is to start small. And unfortunately, you know, we're going to save some of the hardest for last probably. But to really try to get some easy wins in the code, to really go, which are going to go a long way. So I see the heads nodding again that you agree that the next ordinance before you should be an architecture-based ordinance with no changes other than the one change to put all of our tables together, all our uses in one table.
So do you see this happening then, that we have one more session to make sure we're on page? And then the following session, having a public hearing or together?
I would not, I would have envisioned that the next time you see this is a public hearing to create the new architecture. Because there are no substantive, substantive changes. You would make recommendations to the council. Then, when we start actually looking at really making some changes, that's when I think we can start talking about getting something out in advance. So we'd maybe have a, a discussion meeting, you see the stuff. And then we'd schedule a hearing for two weeks or a month later. And then again, we'd kind of come back and say, okay, where are we at? Here's the content that we're looking to change. Get some strategic opinion, some, are we all in agreement on these changes? Then we'd schedule it for a hearing and come back. So does that make sense to you?
Absolutely, I got no problem with it. I'm just trying to.
Page fifty-six.
See what we're, page fifty-six, oh. I read page fifty-six.
What, what, what I kind of chuckled at was the concept of a zoning code being intuitive.
Can be, I don't know.
Do you have an example of someone who you think is intuitive?
For a zoning code? Well, it's really more the tools, I actually do have this, you know, this is what people are, the practice is moving towards in codes is, we would call it the two-page spread. You have all of your dimensional bulk regulations in a chart on one page. And what it would fit in those, in everything it says in that table, a diagram. fit in those, in everything it says in that table, a diagram representing those minimum setbacks.
Would you be willing to send us your PowerPoint?
Absolutely.
Is that allowed, please, ma'am?
Yep, it's a part of the public record after the night, so we'll make sure that we can get it all to.
I'll send it to, I'll send it to staff.
Send it out, Ken, somebody will send this out to us and.
Absolutely, but this, this is an example from a current project that we're working on right now.
This is, I like this.
Yeah, this comes out clean.
Yeah, now this is probably down the road a little bit once we get the architecture, but.
Month.
Let me, let me get Emily up here, she's the one that draws all.
We're going to have no substantial changes.
No changes, with the exception of the table.
But this is.
Just as an example.
This is the intuitive, I would say, this is where it's shifting. I have a, this is actually my favorite, this next slide. So, you know, when Monopoly first came out, these were the rules on the box. This is now how you read the rules of Monopoly.
And I still lose.
It's a lot of information if you play Monopoly.
But see the color, your focus on that versus some of the other stuff.
Right. So I just, I like to use that example to, of course, enjoy the work that we're doing in other communities doing those two-page spreads or the diagrams with, with associated tables. But I think this is a digestible view to see it, too. So I like, I'm glad that you asked because I have these in kind of as a backup slide. I didn't want to take up too much of your guys' time this evening, but.
That's helpful.
Yeah.
Any other questions, commissioners?
No, sir.
Any last comments you'd like to add?
No, we'll, we'll send up the presentation to staff and come forward, yeah, on the twenty-seventh meeting with the ordinance for the reorganization, the architecture and the draft table.
I do have one question for you to ruminate on and I don't need an answer yet today, but if you were to zero in on an early phase success of this process, what would that look like to you? Report back.
I would be able to explain to a neighbor who wants to put a second barn on their twenty acres, how this is where you go and here are what you need to do and this is who you talk to. Bam.
This building is a mess after dealing with some of that, I'm like, oh my God.
Thank you.
That's very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you.
And you notice that I was explaining to a neighbor, not a developer or a development professional?
Right, right.
Great. Thank you for letting me be here tonight.
Yes, thank you all.
We'll continue with our staff updates. As tradition here, we'll start with the hierarchy as we always do. I see we have Councilperson Roberts here, anything you'd like to add this evening, sir?
Yes, thanks, Chair. Just a couple of updates. We did on Monday formally approve two new commissioners for you. One of them is in the, in the crowd here, Jesse Wagner, so welcome him and then Tim Standler, which will be joining you. And I think formally, I don't know when that will happen, the next meeting?
Yep, it's on March meeting. We just needed some time to do some onboarding before. We thought appointment on a Monday and starting a meeting on a Wednesday is kind of putting them a little bit too much in a hot seat.
For sure. So thank you for your willingness to give back to the community that way. Another decision we made at the council on, on Monday is we, as you know, we have an interim city administrator, Christina. We have decided to move up her interview process to expedite that based on demand where she's applied to other jobs. We feel, the council feels that she's done a good job at this point, doesn't mean that we're anointing her, that she's going to have this position, but I think everyone has noticed an increase of just how good of a job she's done to the point where she's here this evening. So it means a lot, doesn't mean that, again, she's going to be that person, but thank you for your time and effort that you've done so far. So, does anyone have any questions of me?
I don't have any. Susan?
Blake, I would like to publicly thank you for all the work that you did on the plunge. All right, and I realize it's not a planning commission thing.
Yeah, no.
But that was absolutely often awesome and I did appreciate that. You, you worked hard.
Well, as someone that's chaired that before and you've been doing it the last couple of years, I realize how much time you put into it and so thank you for that. And also I do appreciate, going up back to planning commission, the time and the effort, like this is a great, to get this thing and Abby coming into the city realizing what a mess it could be in certain areas. Your decision or your, your driving us to make this happen is important and it's going to clarify a lot of things for developers and/or the person that's coming in to, wants to add additional parts to their farm or something, so, yeah. Thank you.
Thanks.
Christina?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to just come tonight to introduce myself to the planning commission members, but I guess I've already met the three of you prior, so hopefully get to meet the rest of them at another time. I'm not planning to come to every one of your meetings, though I don't want there to be this expectation that I will be in this chair. Abby and Ken will do a great job of leading you through, but wanted to take this opportunity to at least come and hear particularly about the zoning code rewrite and, and that process and stuff, since that will be something that is ongoing for quite a while. So thanks for having me.
Any questions, Christina?
No, sir.
It's, it's fair game, it's part of the meeting always.
Christina, one of the things that the community has noticed is that it's important for not only the council members, but for city staff, especially administrators, to be visible in the community at community events and, and we have some that are near and dear to us. And I am hoping that you'll be able to partake of some of those events as both a spectator and a contributor.
Yes, thank you. I, we've already got plans to return to some of those events, so for those of you who don't know, I lived in Forest Lake a few years ago. So, you know, we'll be at the Easter egg hunt, we'll be at Arts in the Park, those type of things that we are, we're used to going to before. We look forward to coming back and being part of that. We're not really cold weather folks, so we weren't at the plunge for that reason, but maybe when the weather gets a little nicer, for sure.
Thank you. Abby?
No, no updates today, but I'm here if you have any questions for me. Yes.
The Shadow Creek apartment buildings, what's the status of that, please? We all noticed the excavator off the property. And, and I was, I was doing the evaluation of all the voting machines and got pulled aside by somebody saying, you, you're on the Forest Lake Planning Commission, what are they doing?
There are no formal submittals at this point for final plat of the townhome project or site improvement of the potential apartment building on that southwest corner. The developer has just today submitted some documents to me, I have not even taken a look at them, which I think is the request for the formal final consideration of that northeast corner. We just spoke today about starting to draft the development agreement with the developer. As of right now, he doesn't have, the landowner does not have any permissions to do any earthwork, site grading, disturbance, but we anticipate that within the next probably couple months, those review processes will occur, approvals may occur, and then we'll be looking at those negotiations for those agreements to get those eventually in front of the council as well. I do believe that landowner would like to start as soon as possible, but we just formally got a document today that would start that process for us, potentially start that process for us.
There was another bad accident last week at sixty-one and two hundred and second. And so that, that driveway that he wishes to have between the Shadow Creek driveway and sixty-one is, yeah, it freaks me out, but it's a concern for the community, too. And I don't know where Washington County is on that.
My understanding is Washington County has said that under certain conditions they would permit it, but that does require some significant public infrastructure improvements, including turn lanes into the development, new turn lanes into, onto Highway sixty-one, moving trails, that sort of thing. I do also believe that the county has done some preliminary analysis on that intersection. I don't know the status of that, but I certainly can look into that. I do, I used to drive that every day and I definitely know the concerns that have been expressed there.
Thank you. Now I get to report that?
Abby, we have two meetings in March.
We will have two meetings in March and as Councilmember Eric Roberts had said earlier, we'll also have two new commissioners in March. And so we wanted to at least just, we needed to do some onboarding things. Typically, they're not appointed till that second, it's usually the second meeting in January and then they start, you know, a couple of weeks later, the first meeting in February, we're a little delayed just due to the lack of staffing. But yeah, we will have two meetings, they look like they're both light agendas at the moment. So if there's anything, any sort of discussion topics or anything you want us to maybe bring back, feel free to reach out to Ken and I and we can put those things on the agendas as well.
Ken, anything to add?
A couple of things. The Mr. Car Wash project is really going to happen. We scheduled a pre-con for next week.
We see the digger out there.
Yeah. So yes, they got delayed in the fall, they have a general contractor on board with the pre-con for next week and they're gearing up to go. So it really, if somebody asks, it really, really, really is going to happen now. Monday night, the council approved the preliminary PUD for Westlake Shopping Center, just south of Mr. Car Wash. And that site will need the utilities that Mr. Car Wash is going to put in to serve their new building. So there's some synergy or importance there for those two to work out. And the Westlake folks are, have already applied to get their final PUD approved because they, they want to keep marching down that road and get their entitlements all in place. So those projects are happening.
Thank you to Public Works for, I noticed there's a sign now, I think it's Second, as you would, to come into the backend. We, we had a couple of residents who weren't happy and, because they would kind of dead end on Second there and now there's a sign there that says no outlet or something. And it's not a tiny sign, so if someone's driving in there now, they might have to take a driving test, so it's, it's an admirable sign. So thank them for that.
Yep, and one, one last application, we think we're starting to work with a developer looking to redevelop the KFC site.
That'll be a handful.
But not a, but not a restaurant.
Man. All right.
That's all I have.
Facebook's going to blow up now.
Susan, anything to add?
No, sir.
Jeff?
No, sir.
Chair has nothing to add. With that, Chair's looking for a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion, sir, either we.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
I have a second.
It's an undebatable motion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for your service, thank you for your time this evening.